A minute after the ten o'clock hour. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte, the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate public and staff availability. Good morning, evening, and we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Hemmingson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of States, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have introduction of any new employees this morning? Seeing none. Report of any closed actions from closed session?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. At this time, we will have requests for any deletions or corrections or additions from board members to the agenda at this time. Hearing none, I do have to pull item nineteen from the agenda. And unfortunately, I will take full responsibility for this. When I was in a hurry to get this done and over with, when I promised Supervisor Sullivan I would have it on the next agenda, I didn't realize that we would still have to meet with Solid Waste to adopt the response to the ad hoc committee, and our meeting isn't until tomorrow. We have two meeting, Board of Supervisors meetings a month and only one Solid Waste, so it will be on the next agenda, um, you-know-what or high water. So, my apologies again, Mike, for that. Okay, we will receive reports or announcements relative to county of Del Norte programs and projects, progress of two-by-two committees, goal committees, and/or board and staff traveling training reports. Supervisor Sullivan, would you like to begin?
I had a brief report. I got a chance to meet with a few minutes with Senator Lamolfo when he was in town for, for the fair. Doug has always, unfortunately, the way the lines look like they're being redrawn, we potentially may lose that representation, which is very unfortunate, I think. Attended the tri-agency meeting earlier in the week, and just on a couple personals, attended my aunt and uncle's fiftieth wedding anniversary. I was only able to go to the fair briefly on Thursday, but that was a really cool deal. And then I, my son Blake took third place for showmanship with his chickens, and, which he did through the Grange, which I gotta commend Helen and Brian Ferguson for roping us into that. But he got grand reserve champion, and before he went into the auction, he said, "I can't wait to sell these chickens," and then afterwards he was sad because he is selling the chickens, so he, from what I understand, John Alexander brought him and is gonna donate him to McCarthy Center, the chickens, so. Anyway, it was a really good experience and it kinda changed him a little bit, so.
Next year, have him do pigs. He'll be happy to get rid of them by the end of the...
Are you volunteering your property?
Uh, no, no, but my son has, has room. He didn't raise any this year. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yeah, thank you. Well, we had action summary, part of that. Had a meeting with Fred Grant. He was here for a short period of time, county council, and he are working on an expectation letter. I think what's been lacking in this whole coordination process is the Forest Service has no expectations on what they're supposed to do or what we, what we expect of them. So, we're gonna lay it out in black and white, and that letter will come before the board for approval, I think, at some point, and we will ship that off so that, that the board knows where we stand, what we expect, and that whoever we're dealing with in coordination knows what they should be doing in order to fulfill their obligation. So, pretty excited about that. Had a meeting with Karen Gere from Coastal Conservancy, along with Supervisor McClure and CAO Jay Serena, about possibilities of, of using Point St. George as part of the mitigation for airport project. She wasn't very receptive, but I think we'll ask the director at any point, hopefully. We have a letter later in the agenda to send off. Had a MORTAC meeting in Chico, so went from Crescent City at fifty-five degrees to Chico at a hundred and two or something like that. So, but it was a good meeting. Their, their funding is being cut just like everybody else's, and they're having issues and problems, but most of them are falling in line and they're being able to take care of what they can do with, what they've got to do with. I attended the, the fair for a couple of days, saw the concert, Sammy Kershaw, and was, although I like Sammy Kershaw, the Jesse Gergen, I thought, did a great job also. She was the local winner of whatever the...
The Texaco country roundup or something like that?
Right, yeah, but she did, she did a real good job, and I was really impressed with her. I thought she did a great job. And then also attended the rodeo. Got a little cool for both those events. My wife got the shivers, and daughter, and they were pretty cold by the time the concert was over and ready to go home after the rodeo because it was extremely, extremely cold for, when that fog lays in there and you're doing nothing but sitting, it makes it a little, a little cool. Had a couple of meetings with airport staff, just discussing mitigation, and also had a teleconference for a short time with Fred Grant, discussing some of those same things, same thing that we've been working on. We also had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting, and that was about it for me.
Thank you. Supervisor McLeod?
Yes, I had several meetings that are my standard meetings, the Redwood Park Association, Senior Board. I did the Solid Waste Agenda Review for Catherine, and attended the fair where I made thousands of doughboys. It's amazing. But probably my highlight of the last two weeks is that I had an opportunity to take about a two-and-a-half, three-hour tour of the Humboldt Bay nuclear plant and the process of the decommissioning that's going on. Even went inside to where the reactor was and looked into the hole where the stuff still is, and had to have a little thing on in case I was gonna come out.
Radioactive.
Radioactive. But wow, what a, what a huge operation to decommission this plant, and it's all, I learned, I thought I knew about waste. Well, now I know about nuclear waste and the three levels, the one, two, and three level of the different types of waste, and how it is dealt with, and how they're gonna move now to the level three waste, which is the, the stuff that's inside that held the, the rods. And it was, it's just amazing to see how they're, like, they have these plastic gloves that they have to pull the pipes in and cut them, in the pipes, the workers, and it's just, it's amazing. They employ about five hundred people at that site between the people who are doing the decommissioning and then the new power plant that's online. That's a, like a generator plant that's putting out the electricity. So, I learned a lot about power and electricity, and it was, it was really interesting. So, that was my highlight. I also met with Karen Gere, and one of the things with Karen is that they do have some dollars available for nonprofit to do some enhancement of access for, for the coast. So, if someone, you know, did some interpretive things, that they could do some, a proposal could be that they were gonna do guided walks and talk, you know, possibly the Talawa history or anything that could happen. So, there's money available for that to happen, and it's for nonprofits. I think even the county could apply if we were so inclined, but it's very seldom do they have non-acquisition dollars available. So, this is actually interpreted program dollars. So, that's a, it's not a giant pot of money, but it's something that we should get our hands on before another community gets it. And that's about it.
Thank you. Well, I feel kinda guilty I have such, so little to report, and not to whine, but I've been dealing with sciatica for over a month, a month and a couple of weeks, so it's kept me from my Sacramento meeting with CMSP, several other things. The only traveling I've done is to doctors and MRIs and still waiting to find out if I can be fixed. Anyway, I did have agenda review and did do some driving around in my district to check out some blight issues. They're never-ending, so hopefully we can get some more stuff cleaned up around the county, and if anybody has noticed, all the workers in the county, their presence is really, really known out there. They're cleaning up so much, and I have failed to mention for a couple of months, a Caltrans worker had mentioned to me the work that they did on the off-ramp from 101 to Walmart, the Walmart off-ramp, and they did a major cleanup in there of a homeless encampment, and he said it was one of the nastiest things he had ever worked on, but really felt that we should acknowledge Caltrans for the work that they did out there. So, I finally remembered, Jerry. Okay, we will move on to, members of the public may address the board on matters. Oh, we have to wait for the public to show? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve?
I have a motion and two seconds. Would you call the vote, please, Jeremy?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes, and that was nice that we had no recusals this time. Nice. Okay, we still have a few minutes. Well, something we can take pretty fast here. Accept the, number seventeen under General Government. Accept the attached application from Borrow Boys Ranch for Title III funding in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and eleven eighty-nine, and direct the clerk of the board to publish a description of the proposed project in the local newspaper and forward the proposed project to the Forest Service representative of the Resource Advisory Committee for their review and comment as requested by the Director of Community Development.
Move to accept the attached application.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Does this need polled? Jeremy?
Yes.
Yes, it has money, we do have to.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes. We're still way ahead of time here. Let's move to, item eighteen, approve the new restated memorandum of understanding between Tri-Agency, Economic Development Authority, and the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors as requested by the Executive Director of Tri-Agency.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Supervisors?
Morning.
What had happened over time was the original memorandum of understanding between the county and the Tri-Agency had been amended numerous times. They were all minor revisions and amendments and updates, and so what was done here was to consolidate all, I believe, six of the minor amendments into the document. There's nothing new. For example, we did the transition from Humboldt Area Foundation to Del Norte Economic Development Corporation as our fiscal agent. We changed the dates for when the county would make their contribution to Tri-Agency. These were all previously approved amendments, and so we just consolidated it in one place so that when we referenced the memorandum, we didn't have to go find five different attachments and put it all together.
Move to approve?
Second.
Again, I have a motion and two seconds.
Pretty good time.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Well, we don't have much we can jump to, I guess. Oh, let's take budget transfers, item twenty-one.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We have to poll the vote, please. Oh, any public comment? Period up till this. I'm sorry. Hearing none? Poll the vote, please, Jeremy.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes. I don't mean to appear to be rushing through this, but Supervisor McClure does have to leave today. At some point, we'd like her to not have to rush down the highways or to the airport or...
Number twenty.
We'll take item, I didn't, we're gonna have a lot of discussion on this.
Actually, I'm gonna, I talked with county council earlier, I'm gonna have to recuse myself on item twenty.
Okay. We will consider the nomination of John Bavin as submitted by the remaining public defenders as a replacement attorney for William B. Cater, and accept or reject the proposed replacement attorney by a majority vote of Board of Supervisors, and if accepted, approve the First Amendment to the agreement, twenty-ten dash one-seventy-six, replacing William B. Cater with John Bavin as requested by the county administrative officer.
I would move that we accept the proposed replacement and approve the First Amendment to the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
We only need three?
It's just a majority, it's just a contract.
Majority, I, that caught my attention too, Jeremy, but...
Okay.
Thank you for...
Just checking.
Double checking.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes. We have a new public defender. Jade, one of the next two, item twenty-two or twenty-three, let's just take item twenty-three because we don't have a lot of time for discussion before.
Okay, legislatively, there are a few bills that are floating through, we're keeping an eye on, and we'll be bringing those forward to the board as action is needed. Regarding the budget, we are hopefully getting closer to bringing a final budget to the Board of Supervisors, tentatively shooting for the first meeting in September. Obviously, there is a deadline, which is, this year, I think, it's September thirtieth. That would be the latest time that we could. We are methodically going to the point of getting a balanced budget, and we're continuing to negotiate with two of our bargaining units, and we hope that we will get some solutions out of those and then be back to the board pretty soon with the balanced budget.
Any public comment on this item? None? Bring it back to the board. Any comment, Supervisors?
You're talking about number twenty-two?
Yeah, I, yes, at first I thought I had called for twenty-three, but...
Yep.
Jay moved right to twenty-two, so...
Oh, sorry. It's okay.
Was it? Was it not?
Okay, so, this did not, we do need to, on item twenty-two, we do need a motion to authorize the chair to sign its inappropriate letters.
We don't have anything.
We don't have any.
Oh, we don't. Did I read that, that there were none?
It's always in there.
And you could have a public comment at this time after. Thank you.
By that clock. Yes, by that clock. Well, we have to go by that clock. Okay, at this time, I will open it up for public comment. Do we have any members of the...
Should have done the topic.
The what? Any members of the public? I don't see any, so we will close public comment period, and... What time is our presentation? Ten-thirty, we still have time for that, so we can take item twenty-three, authorize and approve and authorize the chair of the board to sign the attached letter to Sam, and I don't know how you pronounce that, Schuchert?
Schukert.
Pardon me?
Schukert.
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 Executive Director of the California Coastal Conservancy as requested by the Director of Community Development. Kevin, do you have anything to offer on this? And if you do, could you take your time because we're not scheduled for anything now for nine minutes?
I won't have a nine-minute presentation.
Oh, darn.
But this is at the request of Jim from the airport district. He, of course, they're looking for mitigation for the airport. The Point St. George, when, when that was put into that, that area, that item so that they could, what was it? It was a, well, if I get the letter here. Anyway, it was an offer of, an irrevocable offer to dedicate, and there were regulations with regards to this irrevocable offer to dedicate, and part of those, part of the reason for that was to buffer the airport in that area and to protect the airport. Along those same lines, though, it indicated that if there was to be mitigation in this area, that we would need to seek the permission of the Executive Director of the Coastal Conservancy. And so this letter is a letter to Sam Schukert, who is the Executive Director, to request that we be able to mitigate for airport projects on that property. We believe that this is consistent with that irrevocable offer to dedicate that we entered into some years ago, and would like his permission to utilize some of that area for mitigation.
Thank you.
And without, I would, okay, second.
Any public comment on this item? Hearing none? Bring it back to the board. Any discussion on it? I have a motion and a second, Jeremy.
You don't need it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, capital projects, do you have an update on capital projects for us, Jade?
Sure, I'll talk slow.
We, yeah.
I'm slow.
Martha could go get her coffee.
Yeah. I know.
We are continuing the construction on the townsite boat launch. I haven't heard of any conflicts since the car or the whale. Everything seems to be going forward on that. We have a deadline of October fifteenth, probably will, could get an extension to the end of October. We're, I have had conversations with the Yurok tribe in regards to some assistance down there in dealing with some vandalism that might have occurred. They have some tribal police that might be able to assist us, and I hope to sit down with them. They've had a change in their tribal executive officers, so I hope to talk to Troy Fletcher maybe today and kind of throw it, throw it out there, and we can have a discussion there. They would also have offered up some public service announcements maybe in dealing with that through a newsletter, and so we'll need to give them some wording. Otherwise, I haven't heard anything negative in regards to the project, in regards to water quality, biology. Everything seems to be going as planned at this point. I know that they have mobilized, and I'm not sure if they've gotten in water at this point, but they have been doing a lot of earthwork on the side. We are finishing up the Prop forty. We build, we have some discussions that we'll have with state parks because they have some things that they want us to do before they finish their final billing, and a couple of those could be things we need to negotiate beyond what the project entailed at the beginning. And as mentioned, there are a lot of work crews through the, through the national tsunami money, and my understanding was either yesterday or today, they would be completing the carpentry work on the, on the bridge at Florence Keller. There's been a lot of work done on county properties and road sides, and it's, everything that's come back has been positive.
I, I'd heard today from Ed that the, the bridge is completed and looks great.
Yeah, and so we're gonna get some signage up there to hopefully prevent the issue that came last time, which was putting a horse on a footbridge, which, they are foot trails and aren't designed for equestrian use, so speaking with Ed, we'll try to get some signs up in there to alert people. But all of the reports and what I've seen out there has been real positive, whether it's been the city or the county, you're seeing a lot of cleanup and people are very positive.
That's great. Okay, you're, you're looking at your watch, you can't drag this out. Well, I have a question.
Okay.
With the, the whale in, in the Clamath, have we gotten any reports, like, to find out, how long can this whale survive in, in freshwater?
I haven't heard, I have not heard.
Because that just surprised me when, my husband went to Eureka yesterday, and he said that there's, you know, still people on the bridge and watching the whale, and I just didn't think they could survive out of saltwater this long.
I just know they've been monitoring...
I don't have a real big education on marine life, but...
They've been monitoring the entire time. I don't know what will affect the health of the whale. I have not heard. Our biologist who's on site down at Clamath might have some insight to it, but, and we could ask.
Yeah.
He's on site for all of the construction activities, so I know that he's somewhat in, you know, in touch with people that are out there because if it comes into the vicinity of the construction project, we may have to shut down so that not to prevent her from going out towards the ocean.
Yeah, so it's kind of better that she's staying up by the bridge right at the moment?
Well, we shut down if she meant getting her passed, yes.
Okay.
You know, at, at this point, not being directly across or right in that vicinity, we're able to work. And when the in-water work happens is probably when any type of potential shutdown could occur if the whale was disturbed. So, we will, they're monitoring it. I know that our biologist has been, our biological consultant's been in touch with us, and their field biologist is in touch with people down there. We hear about things occasionally. I haven't heard now for almost a week.
Okay, thank you very much.
I will bring up the, you know, the battery point... And I, I will bring up the, you know, the battery point regarding the RFP and getting that out, and it's still going through the process. It's a little more complicated than originally thought regarding the construction, but it's continuing on. And we'll be having a meeting on Point St. George, the eighteenth, to discuss the trail location and involvement of different groups, including the tribes and state parks, and how we get to the end of this task. We, we have a deadline of December, and there's a very, a pretty substantial environmental document that has to be drawn up between now and then, and there's some biological concerns, and the testing is seasonal, meaning you may have to do it in the spring, which means it goes past our deadline, so we'll be having discussions with the Coastal Conservancy staff, both tribes, state parks.
Who's drawing up that document?
Excuse me?
Who draws up that document?
That would be a consultant that we would hire as part of our responsibilities. Typically, that would be an environmental consultant, environmental scientist, including a biologist, and archaeologists would be involved, obviously. A lot of the archaeological work has been put in place for this document, but they'd work hand-in-hand with the tribes also.
So that wasn't originally something that the project was going to have to have?
It is, yes. Part of it has, there's a corridor that has been dealt with regarding archaeological and cultural sensitivity, that's the trail corridor. Now, when we get into the specific location, a few questions have come up regarding biological concerns. There's sensitive habitat in those areas, and when we get into those, the document has to address what type of impacts might occur, and then any mitigation that would be required as part of that document. Most of that has been dealt with, in my opinion, but now we're getting into some very specific locations, and state parks have some questions and some concerns.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jay, for speaking a little longer than you probably wanted to, but that brings us to our timed item, our presentation by Delnor Homeless Prevention Alliance.
So the Delnor Homeless Prevention Alliance has actually had a couple of names in our evolution. It's been a really valuable experience to be able to walk through this process, and we have quite a few agencies on board. In fact, Heidi Constall attends meetings regularly. We have the Department of Health and Human Services, several staff members kind of rotate in and out of our meetings, and our very active participants, in fact, Dorothy Wadlow served as our secretary this last year. We just had elections, and so we have a new executive committee. Unfortunately, Martha Scott is out of town, she's the vice chair, she's out of town for the summer, and Jody Appel is on her honeymoon, and so they couldn't be with us today, but I know that their participation has been very valuable, so I wanted to make sure that I communicated that upfront, that it hasn't just been a CAN thing, it's been a community thing. So, to get started, what is the Delnor Homeless Prevention Alliance? We're a coalition of agencies, individuals, and businesses who've, whose efforts are geared towards preventing and remedying homelessness in Delnor. It's officially recognized as a continuum of care with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, so we went through the registration process and we're formally recognized now as a local consortium or continuum. So the stakeholders include a lot of the people that I communicated at the very beginning. We've also had participation from realtors, from the tribes, from Royal Human Services, and the school district, and our, one of our ambitions is to hopefully engage in a more meaningful fashion over the next year to the local businesses, because there is a direct connection, and it does either harm or benefit businesses, you know, if we're, if we're dealing and we're combating homelessness in the area. So the benefits of the Homeless Prevention Alliance, we've been working very stealthily to collaborate, increasing our efficiency and our effectiveness in meeting the needs of the homeless people in our county. An example of that was recently, the local housing authority, I think, experienced some shortfalls, and I think that they had some unexpected cuts that came down the pipeline, and there were people that were expected to be served more rapidly, and when they learned of that, because we had been working really closely with them, they contacted us, and we were able to serve them through the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing funding, also known as the HARP program, and we were able to get quite a few folks housed through that that might have been stalled in getting the housing that they needed. So that's just one example. Another example is recently at a meeting, Jody testified that their statistics of how many victims of domestic violence that are transitioning to stable housing has greatly increased since we were able to bring that funding into the community, so I'm proud of that. Obviously, when we elevate one member of our community, we're elevating everybody in our community, so as we seek to better provide services and to work together, everybody benefits. It's opening doors for more resources to help with housing and homelessness needs in the future. Last year, we submitted our first continuum of care application to HUD, and we were approved of the funding. It does take a while to get that funding started, so it's not really expected to come down the pipeline until sometime early part of next year, but the partnership is between CAN and the Department of Health and Human Services, and we're going to be able to provide permanent housing beds for mental, mental clients, mental health clients. So we're, that's one of the goals and ambitions of our group. So how did we form? In two thousand nine, CAN, in partnership with five other agencies, including the Department of Health and Human Services, Royal Human Services Harrington House, the Senior Center in Redwood Cove, and a coalition of churches, for one point six million dollars for homeless prevention and rapid rehousing, and we won that funding. A part of the contractual agreement was to put together this alliance and begin working more diligently towards collaborating. So CAN, at that point in time, engaged outside stakeholders, in addition to the direct partners, to become a part of the efforts. And we sought assistance at that point in time, we kind of, you know, put our heads together and thought, you know, there's a lot of other communities out there that have done this work and are further along in the process. We had been conferring with Humboldt quite a bit on where they were at with their whole process, and they said that there might be a chance that if we wrote, had a letter requesting technical support, that they might be willing to do that, and so we did that very thing, we wrote a letter, and they approved our request, and they have been funding a consultant that has been working to kind of lay the foundation. So we have bylaws, we have a group, we have elections, we're pretty organized. So that's kind of what led us into all of this work. Now, one of the purposes in coming to is we're formally releasing our point-in-time count of the homeless, which was conducted on January twenty-sixth of two thousand eleven, and I believe you have a copy of the full report in front of you. The purpose of this report, or collecting this information, was to, it's required, and we supply that to HUD through what's called a homeless management information system, which is a database that continuums across the whole nation use to input their data on their area homeless, so that HUD can have a better idea of what the landscape looks like, and it can advise policy that then subsequently affects what kind of funding is available to us. It provides helpful information, so not just, you know, shooting information to the government so they can be advised, but it, it gives us really helpful information so that when we're making our plans, we're not just, you know, making pie-in-the-sky plans according to what we think might be the need, we actually have hard data that kind of guides our, our planning process. So the needful information also will be very valuable in our planning efforts to identify funding sources and to communicate our need effectively to both private and public funders. So on January twenty-sixth, we conducted a warming station at the fairgrounds, and we were able to provide a host of tables with area agencies that were providing information. We provided food for the patrons that came out, we provided hygiene supplies and kits to the people that came out to participate in the surveys, and warm coats for those people who needed it, and we also partnered with Public Health, and they provided flu shots for people, felt like that was a good preventative service we could provide. So the surveys were conducted also at satellite locations. Originally, when we put the press release out, and we'd had just a handful of people sign up to do the, to actually be the ones helping conduct the count, so we weren't really sure how far we could reach out, but we had a greater response than expected, so we were able to collect surveys at College of the Redwoods, through the Uroch tribe, down in Smith River, through the Delnor Unified School District, and several others. The details are included in the report. So the greater response equated to CAN training over eighty volunteers who participated in collecting survey information for, that advised the report. We actually were able to train a whole class of sociology students at CR, and it gave them real-life experience on how they can put their education into practice, and I know a lot of them walked away feeling like that was a very valuable experience for their education. Other volunteers included onsite housing screening, so one of our ambitions was for those clients or people that were being surveyed that had the genuine ambition to move to being, coming stably housed, we wanted to make it as easy as possible to get them screened and get them connected to services. As I stated earlier, we offered flu shots, and there was lots of information about other community resources. So at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Doug Porgan, he does a fabulous job at walking us through some of the data.
You know, Kendra, I did have one question on, on page five on the thing. What was, okay, is it twenty-two percent, for example, serious mental illness was twenty-two percent of one hundred and fifty-six?
I'm going to have to, I don't have a copy of it right in front of me, sorry. Page five, you said? And.
The top chart.
Top chart. It was out of all of, I mean, all of these numbers, I believe, okay, so you're asking which ones?
Well, for example, which one, serious mental issue, twenty-two point four percent, is that of one hundred and fifty-six, or is the one hundred and fifty-six the twenty-two percent? See what I mean?
Yes, I understand what you're saying, and I'm going to. Like I said, I'm.
Well, I'm guessing it's like a one fifty-six, the total number of people.
Right, that's my guess.
Yeah, that's correct, so the percentages cited are those of the total collected.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're going to get into that a bit more.
Is it, sorry, interrupt, but is there a reason there's different numbers on that?
Which different numbers?
I mean, on that same chart, you got one fifty-six, one fifty-five, one fifty-four, is that people didn't respond to the question?
Some people didn't, chose not to respond to the questions, and it was a voluntary thing, and so there was some.
That's why the numbers are different, okay.
Yeah.
I just had a real quick question for her also. When you talked about using the college students, were they able to get credits for doing that work?
Yes, they did, and in fact, they, after they participated in the project, then they were required to give a report, and so they did receive credit for their participation and worked closely with Philip Magnusson.
Well, that might be great incentive, you know, in the future for, for different groups to get involved, or if they can earn college credits also by.
Definitely.
By helping, you know, with the community and.
Right, and we're hoping, we'll get into it a little bit later, but we are hoping that when we conduct a second count, that we might even draw them even further into the process of helping them analyze the data, if we can get, we, we use graduate students from Humboldt State University this time to compile the data, but we're hoping that we might be able to draw the graduate students in with some of the undergrad students, so that they might be able to work together and even gain additional experience, so.
Thank you.
And I, I did have one little question, and you're probably going to, I don't know if you're going to do it, Kendra or Doug, but, and you're probably going to get into this, the definition of homeless, but nine point five percent did have housing, does that not make them homeless at that time?
Yeah, that's a curiosity of the process, and I asked the same question myself, so if this is a homeless survey, why do we have anyone taking the survey who reports now being homeless? And the answer that was given to me is that because of the, of the process, namely, that we advertised here and yon, and, and had a warming station replete with food, that some of the folks who came in and took the survey were not homeless, they just wanted food and, and that kind of stuff.
A second part to that answer would be that, you know, if you have somebody that's warm homeless, and they're multi-house sharing and things like that, which is very common here in Delnor, sometimes people don't identify that their situation would be considered a homeless situation, so you may have a respondent that has some inconsistencies in their answers, because they honestly don't identify themselves as homeless, while, according to HUD's definition, they may in fact be.
Well, I, I kind of understand that response, because there are people that are just sleeping on people's couches, and, you know, at the moment, they aren't.
They had those people, that was a difference.
Separated from, from that count?
Yeah, there, well, there's a question specifically for that.
Yeah, we're going to nail some of these factors immediately, so with respect to definition of homeless, it's, I'm, I'm really gratified to, to announce that, that HUD, just recent, just this year, changed their definition to comport with a long-term definition that CAN has held, namely distinguishing, distinguishing what we call cold homeless from warm homeless, and cold homeless are probably the most classic form of homeless folks that any of us think of, namely, they exist without a roof over their heads, wherever they might reside, long-term or short-term, they don't have a roof, they're sleeping out in the cold somewhere. In contrast, and as Kendra was just describing, CAN has long-held a definition or an aspect of homelessness that we call warm homeless, and that briefly is folks who involuntarily house-share, couch-surf, or temporarily stay in motels. And so, so they functionally don't have a home, however, for some reason or another, they have a roof over their head, at least temporarily. And then HUD also clarified their definition of what's called chronically homeless, as distinct from acutely or non-chronically homeless, and it, in essence, constitutes someone who's been homeless continually for more than a year, or who has had at least four incidents of homelessness over the last three years. And we'll get into the significance of, of all the above here right now. So, so we took the time, all the effort, spent all the time, all the effort to, to put together this point-in-time study. So what is the significance of the numbers that we identified? So on the night in question, or day in question, January twenty-fifth, two thousand eleven, there were a hundred and ninety-one households. Now, before I continue with my PowerPoint, I want to kind of spell out that, that you have the, the study in front of you that was produced by Humboldt State. So what I'm going to show you here is a, what I derive as the significant findings from this, so it's not a duplicate. it's not a duplication of what you have in front of you, but it's an addition to what you have in front of you. And I think at least from my vantage points, it's the most significant stuff. So a hundred and ninety-one households. Of those hundred and ninety-one households, multiple had multiple individuals within them. So we had a total of three hundred and thirty-one individuals who were homeless. Now, one of the most significant findings, and I'll elaborate more on this in a bit, children. Nine percent of the homeless counted on that night were children age zero to six. Seventeen percent were children age seven to twelve. Thirteen percent were teens. This means almost forty percent, or a hundred and twenty-one eight and a hundred and twenty-eight individuals of our homeless locally are children. Now, that might jump out at you, as it should, uh but its prominence will be brought out a little more fully in a moment.
Sorry to interrupt. Now, you on the not one hundred and ninety-one households or the three thirty-one, did you strip out the nineteen or the nine point five percent that were there for just for food?
Yes.
Okay, so this is legitimate that not just, okay.
That's correct. Uh moving on from children to gender. And uh while gender might not seem to be an issue at the outset, as I mean, there's roughly fifty-fifty uh in our nation, a little bit more on the female side sometimes, depending on the on where you're where you're looking. Uh in in this study, forty-six forty-six percent of the homeless folks were female. And once again, I'll bring out the prominence of that uh in a moment. Racially, the most significant factor was that twenty-two percent of the homeless, or almost a quarter, were Native Americans. And and that is compared to their comprising only six percent of our county population. So on a on a per capita basis, there are far more Native Americans who are homeless than than other racial groups. Okay, stated causes. Now, these are the causes that the homeless homeless folks themselves stated why they were homeless. These were not independently verified. These were what they said. So stated causes of homelessness, housing costs too high, thirty-nine percent, equally high as substance abuse. So it's pretty well-known that many homeless have substance abuse issues, but it's also notable that they weren't shy about admitting that. Uh relationship, family breakup or death in the family, pretty high, thirty-two percent. Wages too low, thirty-one percent. Serious medical or physical condition, and that includes mental health issues, twenty-seven percent. And a compilation of all the above, and I uh how I put this uh together, I don't recall at the moment, to be frank with you, but uh I can easily put it together in summary form uh i- if requested. But of of the adults, not the children, of the adults, over half are employed. So they're they're working, they're simply not making enough to make ends meet and consequently end up being homeless. Um significant. And it's it's contrary to the common view that that homeless folks are just couch potatoes or or schmoo's sitting around uh on a bench with a wine bottle. Uh does that happen? Of course it happens. But uh there's also folks that that work and are trying to make a go of it. Okay, residency versus transiency, uh also an issue I know locally and in politic socio-political circles, uh mostly the idea thinking that the homeless folks we have here, they're they're just passing through, uh trying to pick up what services they can. And then, once they get what they can from us, they go somewhere else. Does that happen? Of course. Is it common? Well, that's what we're gonna look at here. So residency versus transiency of those uh polled uh lived in Delnor more than five years, sixty-three percent. Lived in Delnor more than ten years, forty-three percent. Lived in Delnor more than twenty years, a full quarter. Now, I don't know about you, but I uh many of these folks are longer residents than me. And uh I consider myself a local and I consider myself a resident. And and so that, we have such a high proportion of homeless folks who are not transients, it bears upon something I'm gonna bring out here uh in a moment. Chronic versus acute. So this uh relates to the earlier definition I cited about HUD. Uh they consider chronic someone who's been homeless continually for more than a year or uh four times in the last three years. Nearly half of surveyed homeless were non-chronic, in other words, acute, having been without housing for more than a month, but less than a year. So these are not long-term folks. I mean, at least a good percentage of them. They're not they're not your chronic, long-term, mental health or substance abusing people who are just hanging out on the street corner with the sign. Okay, now here's where I really wanna cap this off, comparison with national homeless statistics. And I think this brings some some real informative information to all of us. Firstly, children. Nationally, the average number of children being homeless of the total homeless population is twenty-three percent. But locally, as previously mentioned, is forty percent. That tells us something. Gender. Nationally, twenty-three percent, once again, of females are typically homeless, rather, are typically female. But locally, it's forty-six percent. So a vastly greater percentage of local homeless people are both children and they're female. Now, that, along with the chronic versus acute uh factor, namely, the about half are acutely homeless, not chronically, combined with the fact that that uh I just lost my thought. Ah, that uh I lost it again. Moving right along. Um that uh that uh that the homeless situation we have here is atypical. It's non-typical as compared to national situations. So our homeless folks here, they're they're more children, they're more female, they're more acute, they're less chronic. And I I do remember the the other factor I was gonna bring in. They're they're they tend to be long-term residents. They're not the transients just passing through. All those factors combined tell me that that our situation is quite unique. We don't have a ton of social services that attract the transient, chronic homeless folks. We don't. And I don't think anybody's looking to do that, that I'm aware of. What we do have is our situations, socioeconomic situations, which contribute to our local residents, both females and children, who end up being homeless, not because they wanna be, but because that's what their situation results in. And so those factors, I think, inform us sufficiently, both politically and and at a service level, uh that we can really focus and direct our service services and efforts and resources in in as meaningful ways as possible. And that leads to the future efforts.
So one of the things that um Chief Plack and um some of the other participants have really pushed for is that we would do a second point-in-time count um in the summer or fall months. Um we've kind of projected possibly doing that in October this year. Um and the reason being is we know that there's kind of a trend of families who have a tendency to camp for really, really extended periods of time. And we know that that impacts children. We know that that impacts their ability to attend and be ready to learn. Um and we would feel like um taking that count and comparing it to the count in the winter would be really valuable for us to know what it looks like, what the landscape looks like here in Delnor County. Um just by the way, the reason that we did the point-in-time count in January is it's required by HUD. Um they require for you to pick a day um in the last ten days of January. And that's when all of the continuums across the nation conduct their point-in-time count. And those are the numbers that are submitted to HUD that are taken into consideration. My guess is um people are more vulnerable and at risk um during the winter months when it's cold. And so they're looking at what is that, you know, what does the landscape look like um during those periods of time. So we have formed a group to identify solutions for problems with homeless youth. Um within this last year, Martha, um she's been really active um in the alliance. And she, at one point in time, came to a meeting and said, just right now, I have at least twenty homeless high school students. And that's homeless, like, separate from their families. And she said, these are kids that, you know, maybe their home life was bad enough that they left, but wasn't so bad that, you know, there's um an ability to intervene in the situation. And so she just talked about all of the challenges of, you know, these kids that she's hoping to try to keep in school and keep them focused on their goals when they're challenged with where they're gonna stay or where they're gonna eat, um or what they're gonna eat. Um so we have formed a work group around that issue. We sent a a team of people up to Medford to look at a group home there um that has a homeless outreach program. That's a a really dynamic program. Um we just wanted to see what they're doing. It seems to be working really well. They've been very effective and they've had a lot of support from the community in the work. So we took a group and we're planning on um continuing that effort. Um when Martha returns, she's really passionate about it and is kind of like the forerunner for that. Um we also are in the process of outreach to the hospital to um identify possible solutions for discharging homeless patients. Right now, there isn't really a good solution. And when you have somebody that um is trying to recover from pneumonia and their immediate needs have been met and they're ready to be discharged, you know, most people go home and they rest and they recover. But homeless people, especially, you know, the chronically on the streets homeless people, they don't have that opportunity. Our purpose in that would be um to hopefully come up with a solution where there would be um adequate shelter provided and try to target those folks with support services for those who have an interest to change their lifestyle, that we can try to um transition them from to stably housed. Um we need to identify and um work on transitional housing solutions that the entire community can feel good about. We know that shelters are a hot-button topic. Um we think that there are some good model programs out there, not necessarily big shelters, but maybe a scattered site um model where you're actually working to quickly transition somebody into a house that they can stay in. And that's actually what we're doing with the HARP program now currently. Um and it's working pretty well. So we're hoping that, you know, we can continue to work on that effort and that we can um target those services to the people that obviously have been identified um through the survey. We um shared living homes for disabled and housing for the mentally ill. Obviously, we strategically targeted um permanent housing for the mentally ill with support services this last year. We know that um disabled housing is also an issue here. So those are just some of the things that we have talked about and are making plans towards trying to remedy for our community. Um also, housing services for veterans. We know that um veterans will be returning um at a more rapid rate. And we wanna make sure that the community is prepared for receiving them and providing the support that they need to effectively transition back into our community. I think it's something that's really important for us to honor their service. Um so there are plans in in the works for that as well. So ways you can help. Um you can reach out. You can help plan the summer and fall point-in-time count. I will say that um the point-in-time count didn't have a huge budget. Um we operated on a shoestring budget to get this done and it was really effective, but it's definitely a stretch. And so um trying to help us get the word out there that if people wanna make a donation to contribute towards the efforts, it's welcomed. Um we were able to um access some funding through the California Endowment. And it was actually um intended to be geared more towards the US Census Count. Um so the alliance did participate in that. We met with people that went out to do the census count. And um we were able to get a little grant funding to buy the hygiene kits and stuff like that. And we supplied those to the um the people that went out to actually do the count. Um the count wasn't very successful, but I think that that was mainly because of the horrible weather, the night that they were required to go and do the count. Um but as a result, all of those supplies came back to us and we just put them and stored them until we were ready to do our own point-in-time count. And we were able to reuse those. So that's kind of how we handled it. Um you can consider joining the alliance if this is something that you're passionate about. And and some of these numbers or statistics struck a nerve with you. You know, you can get involved. You can help us get connected to people that might be interested in helping. Um and obviously, we we do work committee um stuff as well. So you don't have to necessarily just come to the boring meetings. Not that they're boring, but I mean, you know, another meeting in anybody's schedule is difficult. So um there there may be a specific issue that you feel really strongly about. Um and maybe you would like to be connected to that work group and help represent the alliance in that way. Um that's an opportunity for you. Um something that's really important is that this is a community effort. So we wanna hear ideas. We came and did this presentation today so that we can inform you about the history of what led us up to where we are today and some of the things we're working on. But it's really important that we get feedback um from the community members. And um obviously, um local government is really important for us to hear your feedback. And if you have suggestions or ideas of things um that you think might be good to consider or tackle, um we're definitely open and would welcome you to come to a meeting. And that's all we have for today. Are there any more questions?
I think you've pretty well covered it. Um good report. Um sad to hear these figures, you know, and what we can do about it. I know it's been a problem for years and years.
Right.
Everybody has always tried to work on it, but you know, um it seems like it's always the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
That not in my backyard, they don't want shelters.
Right.
Anywhere, there's always somebody that's there to fight against it. Um I hope those people are never homeless that um and have to deal with that. Um I appreciate the work you're doing. Um I hope you can get more grants. Figure out what we can do, you know.
Right.
It's it's just a a tough solution, you know, to find, to figure out.
Definitely. Well, and it's a multifaceted issue because, you know, as Doug stated, you know, half of the people are working. So it's not like they're unemployed and they're just sitting around waiting for somebody to give them a handout. They are trying. And so I think um very much that economic development is strongly intertwined in this issue because people need living wage jobs. Um and that's something that Doug and I both are very passionate about, seeing industry raised up, especially industry that brings money in from the outside. Because there's only so much we can circulate money here. We need industry that brings money in from the outside. And so um we're definitely interested in that. And um identify that as a very strong component of this effort.
Two questions for you. Uh one, you you briefly mentioned that there are some churches involved in this process.
Mm-hmm.
Because that seems to have been a missing component for a long time. As to
Mm-hmm.
Having a conversation, I believe it was with the supervisors from Napa County, is they actually have it set up between, I'd say, four or five churches where
A rotating shelter.
Rotate, well, they rotate where they sleep, where where they bathe and where they're fed.
Okay.
So there's a a transit-type situation where they'll go pick them up and then
They're bussed over here.
Yeah, they're bussed to different places. And it it alternates. So they don't stay in one place necessarily for for an extended period of time.
Right.
Um but they seem to have pretty good success with that. Um at least the feedback I got from the the supervisors on that.
I would definitely be interested if you're
Yeah.
able to get some information from me or even some contact. I'd be willing to have a conversation and maybe bring that information to a meeting um for discussion. The churches, just to kind of elaborate a little bit, um they are one of our direct partners for the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing funding. And they actually teach life skills classes. So we have three different churches in the area that are um teaching life skills classes. And it is a required component for anybody that receives financial assistance through the the program.
You mentioned three, what are the churches that are actually involved in the process?
Currently, we have Cornerstone, Assembly of God, we have Grace Lutheran, and the Seventh Day Adventist Church. Originally, Four Square was our lead church agency, and they were pretty heavily involved there, in a bit of a transition right now, so we're giving them a break to kind of help, you know, get their ducks in a row, and then I know that they have an interest in reconnecting.
Well, and the, the other concept that was brought up in the presentation that I hadn't heard before, which might be easier to, to get at, is the scattered housing, instead of congregating it all into one location.
A master lease.
You know, a few families in each, each different location, that, that might be a easier way to get put, things put in place.
Yeah, and I think that ideally, it's a way to help people integrate into the community, to set them up in a normal living situation, and helping them transition to be living like that, especially if it's a generational thing. We have a lot of generational poverty here, so if you have, you know, a parent of a child, but this parent has been raised like that, you know, that becomes their normal, you want to create a new normal for people. And a part of doing that is to help them more quickly integrate into society with support services and education.
And what you just mentioned has been a problem here for years.
Right.
I mean, I saw it in my own neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
A lady friend that had children, and, and now I see her grandchildren using the system. This is not just, you know, from mom to...
Right.
This is now down to grandchildren.
Right.
So it is, you know, they, they, a lot of them live what they learn, and it is trying to get them to transition.
Right. And if we want a better Del Norte in the future, you know, that 40% of the homeless are children, they're being raised in that environment, those are our future chronic homeless, I mean, people here in the county, because they're being raised, and that is what they know. They're more than likely going to continue to do what they know unless there's intervention and, and attempt to try to educate them and provide them with a different way of life.
I think that this analysis that you've done is the gateway to being able to apply for support services that will open up some doors for us, hopefully. Good job.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, because if you can show them the hard data, and you've, they see that you've done the work, not just to collect the data, but then to make plans, and they see that you have a good strategic method to what you're shooting for, I think that people are a lot more apt to fund you. So that's what we're shooting for.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, is there any public comment on...
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. Thanks, guys. I mean, they've been doing a wonderful job in leading this effort, and we, of course, want to be very supportive of the community rallying around this issue. In particular, a couple of the concerns that, and of course, I've written to you about this recently in the State Department report, is our casos are going up significantly over the last few years. And it's, it's hard for us to know how far, how much the homeless population has grown over the last few years, because we've, this is the first time we've really had a legitimate count ever. So this is really particularly helpful to us, to gauge as we go forward. A couple of things that are going to put pressure on us as the county, one is, as the state and federal government reduces its supports of health and human service programs, one thing you've noticed is that the people don't go away. They still live here, they just don't know where to go, or what to do about their situation. Now, the most recent circumstance, beginning in July, was the reduction of the Cowworks program from a five-year program. As long as parents were working, they could be, or part-time, or going to school, they could continue to collect public assistance benefits for up to five years. In July, that was changed to four years, so we'll have about another hundred or so families immediately taken off of cash assistance, at least a significant part of it. And you can see, even working, you can't quite make enough necessarily to rent a place. And the, the longer that you're without a rent receipt, or a lease agreement, the more difficult it is to get back into the housing market, to have a landlord actually rent to you. So we're concerned about this growth, especially in the women and children area. Those are often the people that are on other programs while they're trying to improve their lives, and they can't quite get there. So we expect that the situation could get more pressure on those families. Now, the, the other part of this, that you know very well, that we had been working on this forever, is to help families maintain in their homes or in the community, and not end up in circumstances where the children need to be removed from their homes, and from their parents, and put in foster care. Once families go down that track, it's very difficult to really get off that. Now, we've been successful, and we've been able to address some of the pressures that are on us all, to serve those families in a way so they don't have to end up in foster care, or if they do, try to return those children as soon as we can. Remember, about 80 to 85% of the children in foster care are there at a child neglect. So what we see is it'll be more families moving in, putting pressure on our system, moving into that high-risk area. And Jay knows this very well, that our budget for foster care has gone significantly higher, not because we have actually increased the number of families in foster care, we've been, staff's been working very hard, along with our community partners, not to do that. But this last year, that lawsuit that occurred, increased the cost of foster care by a third. So foster parents and group homes are now getting a third more than they were last fiscal year. So that alone is adding a substantial cost to the county. And on top of this, we have realignment, and we're going to see what realignment means, but in terms of dollars, but what realignment means in terms of responsibility is that the state wants to get out of the responsibility of foster care, for example. They just want to pass on some money to us, we can still draw down the federal dollars, but we're going to be held accountable financially if we go over the numbers that the state thinks we should have. So there's a lot of different reasons for us to be particularly concerned about these developments and what's going on, because it will put pressure, and has put pressure, on the county budget.
Thank you, Gary. Is there any other public comment? Hearing none, I will close the meeting of the Board of Supervisors, and thank you all for hanging in there, and great presentation, thank you, again.